Thursday, December 19th, and our school committee meeting will commence. We have one member who is participating remotely, namely Helen Charlofsky. And she has contacted me, and she's far away, and therefore, we think it's permissible to have her participate remotely. There is a quorum of members actually physically here. And we have a phone which is working where everybody can hear everybody. And any vote that we take will have to be on a roll call basis because of that. And if there are technical difficulties, I'll have to suspend the meeting until we fix the problem, which I know we'll be able to do because we're all technically competent to do that. And so that being the case, let's begin. And we have first a calendar, which is, I think, up on the screen. Shows several of our non-school committee, subcommittee meetings and the like, but also it lists the school committee meeting dates from now until the end of the academic year. There is one, there actually might be two, conversations with Superintendent Sessions left the beep session on January 22nd, and then I think you're going to...
We have a heat session to reschedule.
Yeah, right.
Those will probably end up being the only two in January.
Okay.
Because of other commitments.
Right. So that being the case, I can't think of anything else that I should bring to the attention of everyone. So we have a consent agenda, and I would be pleased if somebody would make a motion regarding the consent agenda. Thank you very much. That was Ms. Stone, correct? Hello? You might not have a microphone there. We need a second, if that's possible. Thank you very much, Ms. Cotto. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Oh, we have to do a roll call. See that? I didn't even hear exactly what I said. My apologies. I wasn't paying attention to myself. So...
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Cotto?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Kershaw?
Yes.
Ms. Ditko?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, all. Okay, we're at subcommittee reports. Ms. Kershaw, anything on finance?
The finance subcommittee met, and we have a substantial agenda item later in the agenda, so we'll take it up at that time.
I find that acceptable. Thank you very much. Ms. Charlofsky, you and your colleagues have some things to say about capital improvements, if I'm not mistaken.
We do. Actually, I'll start out, and then I'm going to ask Rebecca and David and Abby to do some other reports from capital.
I think, Ms. Charlofsky, Abby is not here this evening, and I should have announced that in the beginning.
Oh, of course.
She is unable.
Okay, well, then I can do the, David and I can do the devotion school, the first meeting.
Great. Thank you.
And so can Dylan and Peter, you know, add in anything they would like to. So the capital subcommittee met on December, help me, somebody?
You're right, it was in December at some time.
Exactly.
Last week.
December 12th. And we discussed two main items, one being the high school, the RFQ for the high school study. This was to get a consultant to help us with looking at both the educational program and the facility, and helping us to come up with the plan that we would like to have. There was a great deal of discussion as to whether the $50,000 that's been allocated for this study is actually $25,000.
Yes, that's correct. Good.
Not 50, I'm wrong. I wrote the wrong number down here. $25,000 was enough to do the study we would like to have. And the consensus was pretty much that it wasn't. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill or Peter, is that we are going to go out for an RFQ on this, request for qualifications, and then move the process forward sometime in January? Is that correct, Bill?
No, I believe we're actually now, I'm looking at Mr. Rowe, I believe we're going to go out for an, we're going to put together an RFP on this. Is that right?
RFP.
Yeah, it's a full request for proposals.
Okay, I used the wrong term. Yeah, okay.
Yep. And that will hopefully go out in January. And yeah, and we'll proceed with the work from there. Yes.
Yeah, and I think that that's a very good solution. I think that that was what everybody at the meeting felt was needed for this process. It's a very complicated one. Then the other discussion that went on at the capital subcommittee had to do with the use of the old Lincoln School building and the project that we're doing there now to, and the program for the swing space there. And we hope at the next capital subcommittee to come up with some decisions as to what grade spans, which schools will occupy the old Lincoln School in 2015. That's the target date that we have for the renovations that are going forward. I think that our next meeting for the capital subcommittee is scheduled for the 23rd of January. At that time, well, not at that, well, possibly at that time, but if not, the meeting after that, we hope to have a draft copy of the statement of interest for Driscoll School, which is due sometime in April, I think it's April 10th, at the MSBA. So those are the major issues that the capital subcommittee meeting dealt with and discussed. At the building commission, they did talk about the Pierce School and the plate roof on the old Pierce School needs to be replaced, and they were going to be going out for bids for that.
Ms. Charlofsky, can I interrupt you for a minute? I think Dr. Lupini wanted to say something about the earlier subject.
Absolutely, he could have been talking.
Well, he was very polite. He asked me whether I should.
Okay.
Only that we're still trying to determine whether we can submit multiple statements of interest. If we can, at this time, at this time meaning sometime before the April due date, submit multiple statements of interest. We would, of course, also submit one for Brookline High School.
Yeah, no, I think that would be great. And I think that, you know, I think at the minimum, we would be submitting for Driscoll and hopefully for both.
That's correct.
I think that's basically, there's a couple bills to sign, I think you have them there, or maybe we've already signed those during some of our subcommittee meetings for change orders, small things, and Charlie's bills. Rebecca, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the Lawrence modulators?
Yes, I can. I will speak briefly because there is not much to say, if I can just find my crib sheet. We were very disappointed to receive only one bid for the Lawrence modular classrooms addition, and that bid that came in on December 11th was significantly beyond the budget that was contemplated for the project, making it unlikely that we could possibly accept that bid. The building department and building commission are looking into other options. They are doing some due diligence on talking to the folks they expected to have bid, who did not, to find out what the elements of the project were that were problematic in that regard. And we will be meeting soon to discuss possible next steps. Oh, and also, I do want to say that the Lawrence community principal, Rick Rogers, sent out a notice to everybody in the Lawrence community, so the community has been informed of this, and this committee now knows as much as anybody knows. So there we are, very disappointing news.
So maybe that letter could also be sent to the rest of the school committee, because I'm not sure we got that, though I did know that that was happening.
I believe Peter told me that it was put out today. I haven't seen my emails, but we will certainly make sure that the school committee gets it.
Yeah, we'll make sure that, Megan has that, can make sure that gets distributed.
Thank you, Rebecca. And David, could you report on the two committees of seven that you participated in?
Yes, so two committees of seven met to review proposals from, first, from engineers to design the new electrical systems at the Pierce School. And those, three of the four proposing engineering firms were ranked and reported then to the building department to negotiate a contract. And then a committee of seven met and had a very lively discussion of the 10 proposals from architecture firms to design the renovations of the old Lincoln School. And four of the firms were selected for interview, and those interviews will take place on 6:00, I believe in this room, on the evening of January 9th.
Is that a question or a statement?
That was a statement.
It's a statement.
Are there any questions regarding that? I actually have one, but does anyone else? So is there a well-defined program for the renovation of Old Lincoln School?
Well, let me just say a little about that, and then maybe the superintendent can also speak to it. The building, which has been used for the last 20 years by a succession, very successfully by succession of town departments and schools as temporary facilities, and served us very well, has had a modest amount of work done over the years, but a lot of it was of fairly temporary nature. And the building department would very much like to, it's going to be heavily used by the school department for at least six years to get through the construction projects and the population, managing the school, student population. And what the building department would like to do is to do more investment-grade, long-term renovations of the building in relation to major systems, handicap accessibility, bathrooms, the garage needs to be repaired or replaced, the leaking roof. And so there's some major demands on the facility to have it really kind of up to snuff. At the same time, there are programmatic needs to meet the school program of the uses that the school department is going to be proposing. And those are going to also have to be addressed by the design team, and it's going to be a real balancing act that's going to depend heavily on very careful and accurate cost estimating to be able to scope the project that we need with the limited resources that are available.
And if it turned out that the limitations that we have on our resources were such that we couldn't accomplish what we thought we needed to do, is there any chance of expanding the amount of resources?
You asking me?
I think...
No, I was asking Ms. Charlofsky.
Well, my sense is that, you know, part of the purpose of interviewing these firms will also be to ask what they think is accomplishable, if that's such a word, with the amount of money that we have. And so just to get a sense from them, too, what they think we can do. I mean, it's not a small amount, but it's not a big amount of money either. So I think that there's definitely things that we can do to improve the school. Can we improve it to everything that we would like? No. But to most of what we would like, that's the big question, I think.
There's about three and a half...
And maybe Bill has another answer.
There's about, well, there's about $3.5 million available, $3 million that's in one pot of money for the school, and then a half million for the garage repair.
And then another half million for the skin of the school, the pointing of the brick and stuff. So I think altogether, there's four million.
Ms. Ditko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it strikes me that that $3.5 million, if I'm not mistaken, is more or less to just do the basics, behind the scenes, pointing chimneys, doing garage repairs. What it isn't is necessarily, if we think that this school needs to be up to snuff, whatever snuff is, as an in-use building for six years, it seems to me that that $3.5 million is sort of bare bones basics. It is not actually sort of bringing it up to what I would consider a Brookline standard school for a six-year, even semi, you know, it's not permanent, but a six-year process. So I...
Well, we don't know yet. The first thing we're going to ask the architects to tell us is, how do we address these? The IFS names two using agencies that are the sort of co-clients for this project, the school department and the building department. So right from the start, there's a kind of two masters in trying to figure out how to balance and meet the needs of both. And we will, in the very first phase of the project, find out, you know, sort of what the needs are from both sides, and then weigh them against the budget. And then there will have to be some hard, you know, sort of soul-searching on part of this committee and others about whether the funds are in place to move forward with the program that we want to implement.
Right. All I'm saying is that it doesn't seem to me that the, I would not, I'm not assuming that the $3.5 million is in any way going to last us six years for what we would need at that school. That would be an assumption. That's untethered by data, but I will stand by it nonetheless.
Please. That's essential.
Bill wants to speak, Helen.
That's certainly what Mr. Simmons has indicated. I mean, that's been the conversation all along, two pieces. One, that we need to have a decision soon, you can read that as last month, on what our plan is for these three years of elementary. And clearly, that doesn't translate into what we'll do with the space when the high school moves in there. Will need to be more than this 3.5 million to get through that six-year period.
That was much more elegantly stated.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Helen, did I interrupt you?
No. The only other thing I wanted to report on is that the, if we're ready to move on to another, to the devotion school meeting.
Okay, well, I just wanted to ask, then, that the school committee be kept up to date on what the limitations will end up being, and what we might not be able to do, to see whether there are some other solutions as time goes on.
No, absolutely. I think that's very important. I mean, I think we should remember that, you know, there were schools in there, and that we hadn't spent that kind of money at all in the past. You know, the windows are new windows, they need to be adjusted, and things like that, which will cost some money, but, you know, the building is a pretty solid building. So going from there, yes, that there will be needs, and there will be things that we want to have in there. And I think we'll need to make sure that we get as much as we can.
Yeah, for example, I think we're going to need some science rooms, right? Science classrooms.
Yes, yes. That was discussed at the committee of seven, that was certainly, we need to at least have two science rooms, if not more.
Well, yeah, that assumes a program.
Yes, I understand.
So, again, that's why that, I agree with you on that conversation in January is really critical. It's critical that we have a recommendation, a firm recommendation for you at that capital subcommittee meeting on the 23rd, and it's critical that a recommendation come to this school committee on the 30th, so that by the first meeting in February, we know we're going, we know where we're going with program, so that Mr. Simmons can have the building ready for us for September 15th.
Great.
And that should line up, too, with when we get a contract with whichever architectural firm that we're going to engage. So all those things should come together at the same time.
Great.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I've kind of held you up, Ms. Charlofsky. I'll try and be quiet.
No, 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 that's okay. That's fine. I just wanted to report that we did have our first devotion school building committee meeting on December 13th in the morning, and it was a good meeting. The, both Mr. Klechner and Dr. Lupini gave a brief history of what had ensued since the last time we met, which was actually in May, May 30th. So there had been quite a hiatus, and so all the members of the committee were updated on what had happened in the process, and I'm not going to go over that again because we all know it, the school committee does, and so does the public. We've sort of gone over that a number of times at school committee. We talked a little bit about the proposed project schedule, and the architects introduced the team that's going to be working with us. And we talked a little bit about how we calculate our reimbursement rate. They gave us a spreadsheet on how to look at that. And there was just, because I wasn't, I thought that Abby was going to do this, I didn't get this ahead of time to everybody, but basically, we went through, you know, discussions, initial discussions about the project with the architectural team. And we will be meeting again in February, I think it's February 7th, at 8:00 in the morning. And I'm sure I left out a lot, so anybody else who wants to add anything, please feel free.
Mr. Pollak either has a question or wants to add something.
Well, I just wanted to remind all of us that while we had a lengthy concept design process for devotion school that was initiated by the town, this is a MSBA partner project. And this meeting last week was the beginning of feasibility, which from the MSBA standpoint is the beginning, the very beginning of the design process. So there is no design, there are no assumptions about how the land is going to be used. The one thing that we know, other than that the MSBA is a partner, is that they've approved the school for 1,010 students. And that's the problem that we are now starting to solve.
Right, thank you. That was, that's very important, that this is, you know, I mean, we have the advantage of having that prior information, but we are starting anew. And anything else, does anybody else want to add?
Nope. Are there other things you want to bring up?
No, I think that's enough for capital. I think we've taken up enough time today.
Yeah, let me just say on devotion that we, Mr. Rowe, Ms. Floeelling, and I are meeting with HMFH on Monday morning to design the process for gathering input from staff. We'll also be trying to factor our recommendation into that as to when a community meeting should be held. There should be something to say, is the thinking. And we're trying to figure out, in that process, HMFH will engage in with the staff, as to when that might be. My hope is that it would be late January, early February, something like that. So, but we'll know more on Monday, after we meet.
Great.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Charlofsky.
Thank you. I'm still hanging on the line, though.
Oh, great. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Stone, you have a question?
So sorry, I just, because this has come up in a number of different settings, the, what Mr. Pollak just said about the approval for 1,010 students, I just want to be clear that because the community did go through the concept study phase, and because that report was done, that the increase in number of students that we are now looking at with the MSBA does not actually require a larger building than was contemplated in that concept study. That this is an expansion of the K8 population in the way we're talking about it, but not an expansion of the population that was going to be served in that building anyway. It's just the last time we were talking about it, we were talking about having pre-Ks, substantial number of pre-Ks in the building. So the concepts that were done, I know they're not the design, and I know we're starting fresh in feasibility, but the community should maybe understandably confused and think that we're talking about a larger school than we were talking about before. We're not. We're simply taking over the size of the school that would have been dedicated to pre-K and dedicating it to the K8 population. Is that right?
I think that's right. And I think in concept, it's not a larger school, right? Because we were talking, and we should stay in that frame, right?
Right, in concept, that's right.
Right, because the original work in that concept study was designed as four and a half classrooms per grade level. I spent many times trying to explain what that meant. And a certain number, I think it was six, of early education classrooms, and then offices and whatever. And the thinking is, that's essentially the same, the same plan.
Same basic, right.
Yeah, same basic plan.
I just wanted to...
Good, no, that's good clarification.
No, you're absolutely right.
Okay. Now, Ms. Cotto, curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We had a curriculum meeting on December 10th, in which we discussed the strategic plan 2.0, the vision, the mission, and the goals. We had a robust discussion. I'm not going to say anymore about it, because later this evening, Dr. Fisher-Mueller and Ms. Ditko will present what we discussed, as well as how the strategic planning committee has worked and gotten to this point. So we'll hear a further report about that later this evening. The next meeting of the curriculum committee will be January 21st at 10:30 in the morning, where we expect to be looking at the BHS catalog course changes for next year. Tonight, before this school committee meeting, the curriculum committee met with Deb Holman, the headmaster of Brookline High, to look at the school improvement plan. Very interesting meeting. She began by talking about the fact that the school improvement plan grew out of her entry plan from last year, and what she had been thinking about and talking about with faculty. And when she opened school this year, she started out with thinking about BHS 2020, the future of the American high school. And at that meeting, she presented three questions. How do we get all students to success? That is to say, not just the ones who are off to college after having four years of very successful high school and are going to four-year colleges, but every student in Brookline High School. How do we get all of them to success? And of course, partly that means that you're thinking of success in a very broad way, depending on what each of those particular students needs and sees as success in their future. And that will be very different from child to child. The second question is, what motivates all students to come to BHS every day? What motivates them today, and what will motivate them in the future, five years down the road, six years, seven years? And also, what do we need to learn now for all of the students at Brookline High School for today and in the future? Now, it's a very interesting set of questions, and not an easy set to answer. And I think that Headmaster Holman is thinking of the work that's being done this year. As she described it, she's preparing the soil, as if there is a garden that is going to grow there. And this is the year where they're doing the initial work to get all of these things What has happened is very interesting. There are some things, and some of this has to do with technology, certainly not all of it, but just thinking for a minute about technology, there are certain things that are going on at Brookline High. For example, Canvas is an online learning platform that is available for all teachers that they can use for their classes. 80% of the teachers have activated this online platform, and many of them are using this regularly in their classes for their assignments, for children to submit their work, and so forth. She has also been trying to set an example as to what it means to be learning as we move forward into... what it means to be learning as we move forward into a technological age that changes all the time. She has started a blog. She has a Twitter feed. If you go to the headmaster's homepage, you can follow her Twitter feed. You can see her blog entries. There is a student leadership group, self-selected, that she meets with about once a month, where they talk about technological needs and issues, and so forth. All kinds of, these are just some examples of some of the things that have been going on. In addition to that, there is a faculty learning series. Someone has characterized it as BHS TED Talks. And in this learning series, outside experts and experts from within the high school are talking about the questions that have been raised. Recently, David Weinberger, who was a former BHS parent, I might also mention a former Driscoll parent, came to, and an author of books about society and technology, as the interactions, how society will change as technology develops in the future. He came and talked to the faculty about this. And there was some pushback, as of course there are, because not everybody is quite as comfortable with the changes in technology that many of our young people are. And that Deb saw as a good thing, because when people are willing to engage in a discussion, and to push back, and to talk about things, it means that they may be ready to move forward and change their thinking. From these kinds of TED Talks, there are also working groups going on. There's a data, there are certain topics that the working groups are focusing on. One is a data team, senior year alternatives, global options, local opportunities, cultural proficiency, several of these working groups, where the members of those groups are looking into what the current research is. And you can go up on the BHS website, and you can see what these groups are. You can see some of the readings they're doing. And they're actively engaging in discussing these things, because this, they feel that in the next few years, there's going to be much change in education, in what's happening at Brookline High School. And it was very impressive to see the ways in which the headmaster has laid out the questions, set up the ways that the faculty and the students are working on these questions. It is, it just came to my mind that it's the way a good teacher works. And I think that I will certainly be very interested, and I'm sure the rest of the school committee, in seeing what comes of what promises to be a very exciting period for Brookline High School.
Great.
Any else you want to add?
No, it was a great summary, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then Ms. Stone, we have your trio of responsibilities to deal with.
If only I could do them in harmony. So, we have first, government relations. We have, as promised at our last meeting, a fully fleshed-out version of the legislative priorities that I outlined for you at our last meeting. The language, I want to thank Ms. Kershaw for preparing the budget priorities ahead of time, because it's very nice to be able to go to that document and pull an introduction out of it.
Why didn't I recognize that?
Yeah. Why shouldn't we, why shouldn't we use, you know, use good language more than once? So, we have four major legislative priorities. They are outlined here. The first is health insurance coverage for medically necessary treatment in school, which is Representative Smizik has already reintroduced that legislation in this session. It's H-2088. So, we're urging continuation of that. The circuit breaker, transportation reform, and trigger adjustment. Again, Rep. Smizik and Senator Cream have introduced paired legislation in the Senate and the House side, S-217 and H-293, which would add transportation costs to the circuit breaker formula. You're all well aware. But just so the public understands that the circuit breaker is the state funding that kicks in after the district has spent a certain amount for very high-cost special needs students. And that formula does not include any of the mandated transportation costs that may be necessary to take those students to private placements, if they're in private placements outside the district. And so, we have been working for many years now to try to get the circuit breaker formula to include transportation costs. And our legislative delegation has been with us on that the whole way, and will continue to be. So, that's a very big piece for us. That's over a million dollars a year in just transportation costs that we foot entirely on our own right now. The third is to continue to support essential funding from the state for Metco, and for all of our efforts in quality early childhood education, in particular, the full-day kindergarten program. These are programs that are the subject of a lot of conversation now that we are looking at operating overrides and school enrollment pressures. And so, this is a priority, because as it says here, without greater state support, we may not be able to ensure the same level of commitment to either program that we have shown in the past. And we need our legislators to understand how important that is, and how important the programs are, and how important their help is at this point. And finally, mandate relief, which we've talked about a lot, and Superintendent Lupini has given us a lot of the detail on that several different times. But because we talk about growing pressure on our budget, we also talk about the growing pressure, not just on the budget, but on the time spent by our administrators and our educators from both federal and state mandates that are layered on top of our own mandates and initiatives for improving education in Brookline. The list is very long now, and really substantial, the whole change from MCAS to PARK, the development of the Common Core, the educator evaluation, English Language Emergence, and the related teacher training that's required for that, as well as implementing the new bullying prevention law. That is just the beginning of the list. And so, we are once again trying to get the legislators' attention, and have them become champions on Beacon Hill for the districts that they represent, because the pace and size of the mandates that are coming down, while they cover really important issues that we would, we are willing, if not eager, to address, we cannot address them at the pace that they are coming down, not to do an adequate job, and certainly not to do an adequate job for our students and faculty. So, we are trying, again, to get their attention, and get them to focus in on that. As I said before, last time, we wanted to make a reference to, a nod to, to issues that the superintendent brought us through, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. The language, after I heard back from a couple of people about this, is simply says that we commend the MAS for its advocacy concerning the legislation. We take no particular position at this time. So, it's just an opportunity, when our legislators are before us, to mention these two issues, and mention that they are also of ongoing concern. We don't really know what the particulars are going to be. But the MAS is concentrating on those, and we will continue simply to monitor and support the superintendent's work in that regard. So, that is the language in front of you. If anybody has questions, or this is sort of a first reading and second reading. We did have a bit of a conversation last time, but now that you've got language in front of you, if there's more, that would be great. And if not, then I would move approval by the committee of these priorities.
So, we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Is there any discussion, please?
That's all, thanks.
Ms. Ditko.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for pulling this together. It looks great. A couple of thoughts. One is, it might, I'm not sure these need to be changes to the document unless you want them to be, but I think they're just points to raise in the meeting. And the first is that the MAS, having endorsed this legislation, I think this district had some part in that happening. And so, it might be useful to remind folks that the school committee has been, and the superintendent have been actively pursuing this sort of thing, paying attention to the costs that we incur as a result. And the second thing is, what I like about the first one is that it gives a dollar amount for what the implication is. Some of the other ones sort of do. I think the second one does, sort of in the sense that it tells us what the special ed transportation costs are. I don't know if it's possible to actually calculate what are the cost implications of some of the other things that we're recommending here. I think my guess is the one about mandate relief is difficult, because you're taking slivers of people's time, but somehow giving a sense of magnitude. And I'm not really sure, like I'm saying, it's not for this document, but just, I think it'd be really helpful to give people a sense of it, because it still feels a little fuzzy as it is. And I think we can be a lot sharper about the implications and the cost of the system, which is useful for a bunch of reasons.
Those are very good points. And I think we can certainly pull something together between now and January tenth?
Ten.
Friday the tenth, when we meet with our legislators, particularly around the funding for Metco and quality early childhood education. We have those numbers from our discussion last year about full-day kindergarten, so...
Yeah. I mean, the only thing I would imagine for today is to, even if we could just add in, sort of, at the behest of the Brookline School Committee, two years ago, the MAS endorsed, or something, or on a motion by the Brookline School Committee, whatever it was.
On a resolution by the...
It was, it was a resolution that we...
A resolution.
We brought forward.
Right. So, I think that's the only thing I would say for now. Everything else can probably wait.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Ditko. Ms. Stone?
And Ms. Chalobski, you have a copy of this, so making that change, that one change is not a problem, and still getting it to our legislators. Is that right? Okay, great.
Other comments or questions? I just wanted to reemphasize what Ms. Stone said, and what actually Dr. Lupini has pointed out, and that is, it's a little bit tricky to be objecting to the number of mandates without giving people the impression we really don't believe in the mandates. And you were very clear about the fact that it is the timing and not the substance that we're objecting to. And I think it's very important to make that clear in the meeting. I appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. We've had our discussion. All those in favor of the mo, oh, oh, thank you very much. Mr. Pollak is keeping me honest tonight, as usual. We need a roll call vote.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kershaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak.
Thank you all very much.
Nice job. Second part of the trio.
Just to reiterate, Friday, January tenth, we start at eight-thirty. Legislators are usually floating in somewhere between eight-fifteen and eight-thirty. And that discussion always does include the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and of the advisory committee, our advisory subcommittee on the schools. And I think that's, and the town administrator, of course, join us every year. And that's very nice to have them at the table as well.
Right.
So, I look forward to seeing them all there, and before that, of course.
Yeah.
Policy review, we met on...
Negotiations.
Oh, sorry, negotiations. I have nothing to report. Do we have anything to report?
Nothing.
We have nothing to report.
Got it.
On policy review, we met on December eleventh, and had a very, very good discussion about the property, the policy section of Section J, of, on intersected properties and attendance of the public schools. If I can pull my, let me get this right. The, on advice of, on information that we got from town council, as well as our own discussions, town council suggested to us that the standard that is embedded in the current policy from 2005, the fifty percent or greater, which we had then repeated in the first draft that we floated at the subcommittee level, would not stand, would not, it's not in conformance with current law, would not stand up to challenge, and it should, that the current law is clear that fifty percent is too, even distribution is just, is not a strong enough standard. So, we know that we have to, we know we have to change that. And so, a lot of our discussion was about how to reach a fair percentage on that. We did, in response to the public comment that we've had, and also to our conversation with town council, we did vote to remove from the policy any reference to the town clerk's voter registration requirements. It is a different standard for residency, for adults, for voting. For voting, the adult has to actually reside in Brookline. And for school attendance, the child has to actually reside in Brookline. And therefore, it did not help us at all, and probably just muddied the waters to have the voting registration piece there. So, the subcommittee voted to remove that piece. We also talked a lot about the importance of fairness to current children. Again, the draft that we had been looking at and gotten feedback on, had taken great care to make sure that current enrolled students and their siblings, their once-in, now-and-future siblings, would not be asked to leave the public schools of Brookline. We had not considered, we had not considered children who were not yet eligible to enroll because of their age. And so, we also voted to change that in the draft that we're looking at. So, both of those things, the next time we look at it, will have been changed, to include all children. Grandfather clause would include all children and their current or future siblings living in intersected properties, properties at the time of the policy vote. We discussed the importance of clear communication with the public when they inquire about properties. There is an online resource where you can plug in an address, and you get told whether or not you're in the public schools of Brookline. There are other databases, and there's always just the phone calls that come in, that we need to be absolutely clear for any intersected property, that it is simply an intersected property, and therefore, subject to this policy, whether or not it would be differently determined, but that intersected properties are subject to a piece of the policy manual that's different. And we need to make that clear in our communications with the public. And we discussed the possibility of adding a specific, even though the overall policy that this sits in has an appeal to the superintendent, we talked about the possibility of developing a separate clause, just to make clear that an appeal was necessary. But we didn't have a decision on that. That's just one of the things that we talked about. Decided that, again, we had a robust discussion about what might be possible, and decided that that was, we would take up at our next meeting, next subcommittee meeting, the question of, can we land on a percentage that is fair, that conforms with the law, and that the committee can support? That meeting was previously scheduled for January fifteenth. We are unable to meet on the fifteenth, and it has been rescheduled for January eighth. That's Wednesday, January eighth. We will meet from four to five-thirty PM. I assume we can meet in this room, but, so we'll be meeting here in the school committee room. We will be sending out, that notice has already gone out to the schools, but we will be making sure that the public knows. We can put it on the TMA list. And we should, we will try to... And I, and we should, I, we will try to let certainly a butters know, not a butters, excuse me, affected properties owners know so that, so that there's no question that the, so anyway, January 8th is the next subcommittee meeting. Also, I'll count on the newspapers to, to, thank you, sir, to reflect that so that the public is aware. And we meet, so next at January 8th. We do actually have to do work on things other than this policy, which we have been putting off. So we will try very hard to make time for the out of school time policy that, that Ms. Cox has been working on and also to take a look if we can pull it together, Dr. Lupini, on a first pass at the policy on tutoring. And that is my point.
Rebecca, I couldn't hear the time of the meeting.
It's 4 o'clock, 4:00 to 5:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Garof.
Ms. Stone, I just, I just want to clarify a point. As you were talking about siblings of children, we also talked about the fact that even if the siblings were not born yet.
Yes.
They would, but I'm not sure the way you said it would allow that. It was something about siblings living in the home at this time. I just think one has to be careful about the language.
The language will be clear, that it's, it's either siblings or future siblings.
Thank you.
But thank you for that. We will, we will make that clear.
Other questions for Ms. Stone? It's been a lot of work and some interesting ups and downs. We thank you very much, Ms. Stone, for carrying this out with aplomb. Ms. Tietkoff, override study committee.
Anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Pollack. So we're about a half an hour behind schedule, and I can talk about this for about 30 seconds or about another half an hour. So let me ask the committee whether they want a, what size update do you want? We're going to crowdsource this one because some of you have been going to these all along and you don't feel the need to be updated. Some of you are following along a little bit more of a distance and it's, we're, we're a half an hour behind schedule.
Why don't you start with the highlights of the things you think we ought to know?
I was also going to suggest that at the end of the meeting last night, there was a very important clarification about the schedule that the override study committee is now on and what you're trying to reach, what kind of information will be available and discussed and things like public hearings, sort of when the, when the public, when we and the rest of the public can, can expect. So if you could highlight any conclusions that were reached in that regard, that would be helpful.
Okay. So as you know, there are eight subcommittees, which is where most of the meetings are happening. There have been over 30 override study committee meetings in December alone, if you count all the subcommittees. So I'm not going to attempt to characterize it except to say the following. There are a number of subcommittees that are not directly related to the schools, but that are very important to the overall number, things like the revenue subcommittee and investigating parking receipts and other sources of revenue, demographics, looking at the housing stock and trends, and ultimately trying to get a better kindergarten number or, or not than the one we're using already. The municipal committee, which is looking at fire, police, DPW, libraries, cemeteries, everything. So I'm not going to go into any of those at all. I, sorry, one more fiscal, two more fiscal policies, which is, you know, how do we bond things? And then pension and benefits, where most of what they're recommending or investigating, I should say, for recommendation, has to do with cost sharing percentages of health care and things that the retirement board would have to do in terms of part-time, people being eligible for benefits and that sort of thing, and at what vesting schedule. So the three that are most relevant, I think, to, to this committee, although they're all relevant, but the three that are most relevant are the two school subcommittees and the capital subcommittee. So the two school subcommittees, if you recall, one is about programs and one is about things that increase the student population besides resident children. So that is BEEP, Metco materials fee and things like that, and special education. And then the capital subcommittee is trying to, from a capital point of view, do the same game of musical chairs that we've been doing for quite some time, which is how do all of the children fit into the buildings and, and when and where do they move? And what assumptions do you need to make about that? So a couple of thoughts. I mean, I think one of the things that the committee is doing is elevating the most important, the subcommittees are doing, elevating the most important policy implications that their, that their choices or their analyses are, would have implications for, and then the costs that would be saved or revenues that would be generated accordingly. So for example, there are models being created in the population subcommittee that said if alumni, if, if Metco were eliminated entirely, what would the short-term and long-term cost savings be on an operating and a capital basis? Same thing with the materials fee program. If it were eliminated entirely, what would the cost savings be? In an attempt to get their minds around essentially the cost of that policy choice, and presumably, depending on the cost of that policy choice, come to their own recommendation to us about what we would do about, about that sort of thing. I will say that there have been a number of people who are trying to push the idea that it's not all or nothing, that there are also other more flexible ways to think. And again, I think they're still at the point of a modeling exercise, but I do think that it's a serious enough conversation that anybody who is interested in those two programs in particular, it's, it should be of interest to them. In terms of BEEP, that was an extended conversation with the principal, Vicky Milstein, who did a terrific job presenting the research behind early education in general. She alluded to the research about Brookline in particular. Ms. Trelefsky was not in attendance, but would have been very proud. And there was then a discussion of the fully loaded costs of pre-K down to the level of detail that said if you were to, for example, but part of pre-K is mandated, part of pre-K is not mandated. If one were to outsource all of the mandated pre-K in Brookline, what would the cost savings be, if any? And there were very different thoughts about whether or not there would be cost savings. What would the savings in terms of capital be, given that we're renting space and how do you think about that? So I would say that most of the conversations have been focused on nailing down the numbers behind the decisions. What they have not done, despite some efforts to the contrary, is talked a lot about the pedagogical costs and benefits. I think they're, they see their role as being more about the cost savings or, or lack thereof. I think that what's clear is that when they come to a full recommendation, it will be very difficult to consider a recommendation like that that doesn't also layer on the pedagogical implications. I, I think that even the people who are interested in that, they're just not, they're just not there yet. And I'm not sure everyone is, is, sees that as their role. In the program subcommittee, it was questioned, everything from how do we think about extended day? And is extended day part of, should we be charging extended day for the use of the space? Should we be taking over extended day? Really sort of broad questions like that and, and what it would, all the way down to should we charge for SWS or eliminate SWS as a program? So again, anything not mandated that has an operating or capital implication seems to be, seems to be the form of the core of this. On the capital side, I will say that they are starting from the B-Space report and they are, had a great discussion with a number of the selectmen, the chairman, Betsy DeWitt, Slakma Oshinsky, with members of the school committee, Rebecca and Alan, the town administrator, Mel Klechner, and the superintendent. So a, a deep dive back into the work of B-Space to understand it, as well as understanding the differences between the B-Space vote and the school committee vote, because they differ in some important ways, which seems to be a point of significant confusion out in the community as to how the B-Space vote, how the B-Space recommendation differs from the school committee vote. So I think people are trying to parse that apart as well. So I think there's a, I think there's a wide variety of things that are happening. In terms of the schedule, you know, where is this, sort of where are we going with all this? Clearly, the mandate from the Board of Selectmen, realistic or not, was that the, by March 1st, there would be a recommendation about the FY15 operating budget. And everybody still understands that that's what we need to deliver for practical purposes more than anything else. In fact, we, we all recognize, including the Board of Selectmen, that if anything, that's a little bit late because town budgets are due on the 15th of February. And we have different conceptions of what, what of our budget is due in that timeframe as well, because we have some options. And so, so some of the question is a very practical question, which is what is the best answer we can get to by March 1st that will do the least amount of damage and, and the most amount of good? So there are a couple of different options. One is to come up with some sort of bridge idea where if the committee isn't ready and if the town and the schools can come to a, an agreement as a shared understanding of what a bridge year would look like, then that could potentially be a way to alleviate pressure. Certainly, the, the details of something like that would have to get worked out pretty carefully, but, but it's certainly an option. It's been an option from the beginning and it's, it's still an option. And then the second idea, which I think the committee is still.
Just for an operating.
Just for, just for the, just on the operating side, sorry, a bridge, a one-year bridge that, on the operating side. And so I think there was a fair amount of question of would that bridge include programmatic cuts? Would that bridge include any number of elements that are still getting, and the answer was no one knows yet. It needs, it's a concept and people are going to work on it. People, these people, mythical people, who work on these things.
And the cold words.
So that's one idea. A second idea is if, for whatever reason, that one cannot come to an agreement on what that bridge looks like, that would, that would satisfy all parties. Certainly, there's this idea of a, of an operating override that is what the committee is still pushing to finish its analysis on. So on that front, so on the bridge front, I would say that's being largely driven by staff. Any, we're hoping that they will come up with something that they will present back to the override study committee in the middle, early, early to middle of January, early is better. But, but obviously, it's going to take some time to do that. And then the work of the committee itself is to continue to push to complete its work by March 1st. So what does that mean? It means that if you work backwards from March 1st, essentially by March 15th or the middle of March, votes need to be taken of some sort about what we would do, because it's going to take a little while to hammer out wording and hammer out something that we can, February 15th, sorry, February 15th. So middle of February, one might anticipate some votes on some things. If you back up from there, it would mean public hearings at the end of January, beginning of February. If you back up from there, then the, the main policy elements that are under consideration would need to be prepared for the community so the community understood what it was coming to a public hearing on. So what is that handful of, handful of policy recommendations that the override study committee is contemplating that they would like public input on before they consider their votes? So again, I think it's the idea of a January, so January 15th is the next full meeting of the override study committee. At that meeting, we would hopefully have a report out on this bridge idea and what we know about it or what we don't know about it. Before then, and I'm saying this with some trepidation, we would ideally have gone through that as a school committee in a finance subcommittee meeting of some sort, so that that was not the first place it was discussed. And at the same time, the, the subcommittees will be coming back with their, what we're calling a first look at their recommendations. What are the big things that they're, they don't need to have everything nailed down, but just what are the things, the big things they're contemplating and the rough order of magnitude of cost savings or implication or revenue implication that it would entail, such that between January 15th and the end of the month, we could not only identify those items for a public hearing, but start pulling them together in a coherent way. The only other thing that I will say is the Board of Selectmen has asked for a report out on January 21st, which is just an update. It's not a formal thing. But they kind of, the, the overall question at that point is where is the committee headed? Which is a very fair question. Six weeks before, they're going to have to contemplate doing something with a recommendation. I will also note that we have a school committee meeting on February 27th, which is a Thursday night. And if the recommendation is due March 1st, it's a Saturday. That basically means the day before. So two days before it's due, there's a school committee meeting, so I would anticipate that we would want to, and I don't know who we is, it might be me, it might be someone else, have some sort of preview of what the override study, some sort of presentation and discussion here, so that when the Board of Selectmen receive the report, that we at least have had a chance to, to talk about it in advance. Given that there's only one day left, I'm not going to assume that the override study committee is going to do anything with that discussion, but, but the Board of Selectmen might. So I think that's an important moment as well. That was far longer than I anticipated.
It was great, however. It was well worth the sacrifice.
Who's sacrificed? Has anybody, anyone, any questions? And people, I mean, you, many of you have been at these meetings, so you might have things that are A, concerning, B, exciting, C, unclear.
Ms. Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think it's really important that we express to the override study committee that this body viewed FY14 as a bridge year. And I remember our conversations quite well in a difficult budget year of adding back, using $650,000 of one-time funds and creating extremely thin reserve and contingency funds that I don't think any of us felt particularly comfortable with. And at the time, we discussed this being a bridge year. Now, that doesn't mean we can rush the committee to get to a conclusion before, but I think it's important that, that they are aware that our view was already, that we were not ascribing to some of our own best practices in budgeting in order to get to a place that the override study could maybe could take time and, and think about whether additional revenues are needed. So I would appreciate that being expressed on, on at least behalf of the finance subcommittee to the override.
I have a new phrase, which is, let me, let me say it this way, which I've, I've stolen from our superintendent. Let me, let me try it this way. That has been expressed. I would say that the best way to express it again would be in our sense of what a bridge year, year two, looks like. Let me put it that way. Does that make sense?
That's fine, yeah.
I mean, I'm, it's, it's been expressed.
Sorry, and, and that doesn't mean I'm necessarily opposed to another bridge year. I just think it's important that we're as transparent as possible, that we're, we're already operating on thin reeds, as my grandmother would say in some respects. So, thank you.
Thank you.
On a rickety bridge.
On a rickety bridge. To another bridge.
Ms. Stone.
I just want to, want to clarify. You, you said that relative to lining up how wide the bridge has to be in order to accommodate another year. What's, what's our role in, in putting that together? How does that, how does that intersect with our own budget priorities, our discussion of the, of the technology plan? Where, where is the school committee contributing to that discussion?
Let me try this and then, you want to try it? So it seems, my, my sense would be that the person tasked with, immediately tasked with figuring out what a bridge that the school department and school committee might be willing to approve, that immediate task falls to Bill and Peter. And it seems to me that the point of scheduling a finance committee meeting before January 15th.
Right.
Is that that would offer us an opportunity to, the school committee, an opportunity to weigh in on what we think about that bridge before it gets too far down the road. My sense is you have enough of a sense of what we want already, and you probably will need more of a sense when you get closer to something that's a real thing. Is that fair?
Yes. So let me.
Try not to be opaque. Like I just, it's, it's, there's a process piece to it.
So I think, I think what's different about this conversation than the bridge conversation of last year is that it, it must include some of the enrollment elements that are associated. associated with support services, which have been called up to this point, catch-up, right? And it, and it must include some pieces, whether it takes that technology plan and stretches it out in some of the ways that we've talked about as a staff, or, fine, but it must, it must include those, those sort of starter pieces of those two, and those two. It's not a, it's not a model that says, let's do what we've done the last five years. Let's fund classrooms and move on. Because as I shared with, and I'll say this much here tonight, because as I shared with the town administrator today, you know, we're, we're almost through our budget conversations with principals. And what is, what is increasingly apparent are the sort of cracks in the foundation created because of decisions that I would make again, right? Decisions to use our resources at the classroom level and, and hold steady on guidance counselors and nurses and vice principals and a whole list of categories that you've seen. Much of our, to be right up front, much of our conversations with principals in this round are about those areas. In fact, one could argue it's north of 80% of the conversation is about those pieces. And I think that's the demonstration of what's happened as a result of decisions that we've all made, right? And so it must be part of, part of that equation. And we've had some good conversations about making sure that that is.
And the other thing I'll say is that the deputy town administrator last night mentioned some elements of a bridge that included level funding of services at the school level, which is different from what the superintendent just said, but that is something that the deputy town administrator said. What Bill just said was not discussed explicitly, anything that, so, so whether this committee would agree to anything that was only level funding of services, that didn't make some headway towards the catch-up or some headway towards technology is something that we would need to discuss. Similarly, there are some assumptions about new revenues that could be put into place right away, like parking meters, which is the one, that's the lowest hanging fruit that everyone keeps wanting to whack at and get the candy to fall out, because some of them are much longer-term revenue opportunities. So I guess what I would say about some of the revenue opportunities is that they're sooner. So if they came online sooner, what would the revenue implications be? And how would that help with this bridge idea is all part of the conversation. I guess the other thing that I will say is that the, the discussions at the override study committee are, we already know, for those of you who've been there, that, you know, there are models out there that say, if class sizes were increased by two students per room, average class sizes, one could theoretically get rid of, and I put that in quotation marks, the capital problem, which isn't actually true. But, but anyway, things like that. And so we will certainly be confronted with a series of questions around class size, around materials fee in Metco, around extended day, around special education. There are going to be a number of these things that are going to be coming to us. And so there is sort of some, some place in this dialogue before the end of March, sorry, before the end of February, that, that we should start putting together our, our response on that. And the reason is, is that we're having our own conversations about many of those things. And so that dovetailing, the sooner it happens, the better. Does that make sense?
Ms. Kershaw.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that we do have a finance committee meeting scheduled for January 13th, although it's not on the calendar.
Right. But we, we were thinking that it might have to be...
Well, I actually can't be here, so we're attempting to reschedule. And I thought, I thought they contacted you, I'm sorry.
This just in?
Yeah, but we, we will, we'll do that tomorrow.
All right. Other? Okay. Thank you. Are there additional liaison comments that anyone would like to make? Mr. Pollak.
Just two very quick reports. I, as liaison to Brookline Dalton Community Education, B.A.N.C.E., I met with Claudia Delano, the executive director, and Arthur Conquest, who's on the advisory committee or chair of the advisory committee, and just heard a lot about their programs and all the great stuff that they do. And it was really an orientation. They have not yet had an advisory committee meeting, which I think they're going to try to schedule one for January that I'll attend. And I also attended, in place of Mr. Chang, last night, the Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission meeting across the street at the Health Center. And there was a lively discussion, though no quorum. And they are avidly awaiting the action of the, of the selectmen to fill out their report.
Thank you. So are there others? So I would just mention that we did have a meeting of the Town-School Partnership this past week, and it was a timely meeting in light of what you've just heard. And there was a sense that although the assistant town administrator did kind of divide up the potential revenue on a 50-50 basis and show us what it looked like in terms of deficits or surplus, and, but it, it seemed to be emerging even then that maybe the division this year might be somewhat unorthodox compared to what's happened before with a, quote, bridge or, or whatever. So I think we'll probably have another meeting. And I also went to a very interesting Mass Association of School Committee Park discussion out in Worcester. And, and I'm not going to take up the time. There are a certain number of issues that I thought were interesting, which I'll try and summarize to all of you in some kind of brief memo. So Dr. Lupini?
No.
No? Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Do that every time. Getting used to it, anyway. So we have four individuals who would like to speak tonight. And I will just remind everybody that the comments should be kept to three minutes each, and I do time that, and I let people know 30 seconds before they finish. And we're already, and this is my fault, way behind schedule, so I, I will want to stick to that very carefully. When you come up to the podium, if you will name, if you will state your name and also your address and the subject you'd like to talk about, I suspect I know, looking down the list, what it may be. I would appreciate that very much. And Christine Greco, you're first on the list, so you're welcome to be first to speak.
Thank you. I wanted to address a few of the comments and issues that were made at the last subcommittee meeting regarding the revision of the eligibility policy. So the one issue that was discussed was that, it was a comment, but it was because families on intersecting properties pay a portion of their taxes to Newton or Boston, that we don't pay our fair share taxes to Brookline, and that at some point, we should be excluded from the Brookline Public School system. So the citizens of Brookline look to you, the leaders of our community, to make fair and reasonable decisions for us. We depend on you for that. So if the problem is that families pay a portion of their taxes to another town, but we're not using their school services, why is the solution to that problem to financially crush a handful of families, hard-working families, who bought their homes in good faith, who had assurances from the town of Brookline, and, and that their home was a Brookline school home? A fair and reasonable solution would be to recoup that money from Newton or Boston. If we're paying taxes to Newton or Boston and we're not using their school system, wouldn't a fair and reasonable solution be to negotiate with those towns to recoup some of that money? Or allow us to pay greater than 50% of our property taxes to Brookline if it means that we can choose the Brookline Public School system as we have been promised? So I look to you, the leaders of our community, to make the, to find fair and reasonable solutions that don't financially target a handful of hard-working families. Another comment that was made was that children who live together on the same street will play together regardless of the school that they attend, alluding to the fact that a change in this policy will not affect the current communities in Brookline. On Middlesex Road, that is not true. The children who play together on Middlesex Road are the children that walk to school every day to Heath. They're the ones that eats lunch in the cafeteria, they play at recess together, they go to school together. The kids that go to private schools or other schools on our street, they're not part of that. The, every family on Middlesex Road signed our petition because they value their community, they know this will divide and destroy the community on Middlesex Road, and they oppose it.
30 seconds, Ms. Greco.
Thank you. The last comment was that, that we are being, by not paying our fair share taxes to Brookline, that we're being unfair to the citizens of Brookline who do pay their taxes, 100% to Brookline. We have an online petition of almost 500 signatures, as well as a handwritten petition of all the occupants on Middlesex Road. If you want to be fair to the citizens of Brookline, please look and read that petition. Some of the most passionate comments on those petition, that petition was from 100% Brookline residents. Thank you.
Ms. Greco, would you state your address? I think you forgot to do that.
Oh, sure. 162 Middlesex Road.
Thank you very much. I should also have mentioned that, don't be surprised if there's no back and forth. This is, this is not a public hearing, it's just a public statement, so. We have Bruce Haberberg. Hope I didn't butcher that.
No, that was very good.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Bruce Haberberg. I live at 128 Middlesex Road. And I think you did a great presentation, so I would just like to present sort of my history, since I now have kids that lived through about 15 years of Brookline schools. I've been a Brookline resident since 1975. My kids started out attending Lawrence School. When we had the opportunity of buying a house in Brookline, our first requirement was, we have to stay in our Brookline school system. We then looked at 128, and the first thing we did was, we came to the town, we were told that is, you can go to Brookline schools in this town, from this house. And it, you know, anyone that lives there could go to Brookline schools. So we went and bought the house. Through there, I lived through 15 years of Brookline schools, through running the Lawrence after-school program, to coaching soccer for 12 to 15 years, developing a tremendous Brookline Rocks, helping develop a Brookline Rocks, very basketball program, following through league, division, and even state championships. Now I feel I'm exiled, and my kids are exiled from Brookline. I understand, as was mentioned before, that there is an issue as to real estate taxes. And what should be fair, and clearly, where students go, there should be recruitment by that town for taxes. However, as we all know, the Brookline attending, and the ability to attend a Brookline school system is a very valuable asset. My, my view is that this was promised to me by this town of Brookline. And now Brookline is taking that right away from me. And I just don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura.
Hi, I'm Larissa Georgian, 132 Middlesex Road. And I just wanted to point out that today here, there are five residents from Middlesex Road, and two of us currently have children in the system. Two have had children in the system.
Could somebody give Laura a, we ask you, Laura, because there may be some people listening over their TV and needs to go.
Sure. So I can just repeat that, that of the five of us from Middlesex Road who are present here tonight, two of us currently have children in the system, two of us have had children in the system and are past that point in their life, and one own it as an investment property and have renters who do not have children in the property. That means 60% of us currently pay taxes to Brookline and do not use the school system. They are subsidizing their neighbors, they are subsidizing other members of the town who are using the school system. I also want to point out that it is clear that the impact of this policy goes beyond people with children. Three people who do not have children who are present here today are here because it impacts the value of their property. I cannot state this clearly and loudly and emphatically enough, that you are, this policy will have a huge impact on the value of our property, and it is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thea.
Hi, I'm Thea Singer, 243 West Roxbury Parkway. You've all received a letter from me, you've all received the copy of the written confirmation I got from James Walsh, that our address, 243 West Roxbury Parkway, was indeed Brookline Schools. The letter said Baker and Brookline High School. A comment has been made in the tab in the subcommittee meeting about this not being into quote-unquote perpetuity. Why didn't the school committee tell us that before we bought our house? Why didn't the superintendent tell us that before we bought our house? Why didn't the school department tell us that? We would not have bought our house. If we knew there was any possibility at all that this could be revoked or changed, we would not have bought our house. It's your job as leaders to let us know what the policy is, how long that policy lasts, because we're depending on you to make our decisions regarding our financial, emotional, intellectual health. Another comment I want to make is that we bought our house in 1996. We got the letter in 1995. Our daughter was not born until 1998. We bought it knowing that when we had a child, whether it was conceived naturally or adopted, and we ended up adopting our daughter, that we wanted Brookline schools. What you're trying to suggest now would have excluded our daughter from Brookline schools. My final comment is, in the subcommittee meeting, it was said that these folks are saying they have only X percent, a very small percentage, of their properties in Brookline, and they're claiming they're Brookline residents. We are not claiming we're Brookline residents. You told us we're Brookline residents. My final comment is, a friend who had, was at the meeting, the subcommittee meeting, 100% in Brookline, said, when a community is in trouble, the community comes together. The community does not kick members out. That's what I want to leave you with.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else not on the list who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none. Now, Dr. Lupini, I think you're up.
Thank you. So you should have a copy of the report. The first item concerns English language learners. At our prior meeting, I provided you with the update on our enrollment information from Mindy Palo. There was a discussion, and I'm sorry, it actually goes back further than I say here. There was a discussion about individual school enrollment data and about our major language data. And those are included in this report. I don't particularly have a comment on them from, it would be from 1989, not what my report suggests, 1989 through 2013, both in terms of school enrollment and major language. The other thing I did want to point out to you tonight is on one of the major assessment tools that we have available to us in English lang, for English language learners. We just received the 2013 Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives Report for Title III districts. Title III districts are those who serve 100 or more ELL students, which we certainly qualify in that category. It's based on access, the statewide assessment now for, for ELL students and MCAS data for 2012, 2013. And we, we are one of 14 of the 66 Title III districts that met a benchmark in all three of the AMAO categories. And they are listed here for Target in Progress in Learning the English Language, Target in Attainment of English Language Proficiency, and the Cumulative PPI. So... So this is quite an accomplishment, and we're very pleased for our students, for, for our teachers, and certainly the leadership of Mindy Palo in this program. This will be the, my gosh, third or fourth consecutive year that the state is sponsoring Project 351. This started as part of Governor Patrick's 2011 inauguration. It's grown into an independent statewide initiative, bringing together eighth graders from every city or town in the Commonwealth. This year, we were asked, we were invited, excuse me, to provide the names of two of our eighth graders to participate in Project 351. And I'm pleased to tell you that Sonia Hills from Heath School and Jacob Zachary Flanders from the Lawrence School will represent Brookline as 2014 ambassadors for Project 351. They will first participate in a day of service held on Saturday, January 18th, and then take part in a number of events throughout the year. And we'll make sure, we have a press release that we'll have ready within the next week or two on their participation, and we'll make sure you get a copy of that, providing more detail on the program and why these two deserving students were selected. We are currently participating through Scott Moore's leadership in Project Tomorrow's 11th Annual Speak Up National Research Project on Educational Technology. We've invited students, educators, and parents to join this conversation regarding technology in the classroom. And that survey ends tomorrow. We will get, we will receive in February, I believe it is, some, some data that we can use, both in grant writing and in, in enhancing our overall technology plan for moving forward, as well as professional development. Park, we will begin to roll out in mid-January, an outreach program to better inform parents about the upcoming field test, the Brookline classes that have been selected for participation, the ramifications of my decision not to double test our students, and the timeline for consideration, Massachusetts' consideration of a possible adoption of Park to replace MCAS. So I'll provide you with more details of that effort in January. We are supposed to, by that time, have some materials from the department to aid us in that effort, and we're not counting on it. We believe we'll have to create most of them ourselves. I said here in the next item that honor before tomorrow, it actually went out today, we would send out invitations for our Unit A teachers, Teachers Unit A, to apply for their children to participate in the materials fee program. And those went out today. Those are due back on February 3rd for these students to be considered for enrollment. Next, we would do other school employees, which includes Unit B, individually contracted employees, and, and other categories, cafeteria workers, custodians. And then we would do town employees. I don't have timelines on those yet, but they don't come at least until mid-January, till we would even put out those materials. We have our next Steps to Success Board Meeting, Mr. Morris, on January 9th, Thursday at 3:00. And the last item I have is, is a statement on a former, on a former employee. As many of you know, we learned last week that a former employee of our school system by the name of Carlos Morales was arrested last week. We were surprised and upset to learn of this occurrence. We continue to fully cooperate with the criminal investigation, and we are working closely with both the Brookline Police and the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office. Mr. Morales was employed as a paraprofessional at the Pierce School during the 2007-2008 school year, and at the Edward Devotion School during the '09-10 school year. Mr. Morales also worked at the Extended Day Program at the Pierce School from 2007 to 2011, and at the Driscoll School from 2011 to June of 2013. We are conducting a full investigation into Mr. Morales' employment history and overall involvement with, with the public schools of Brookline. In accordance with our public school policies, I want to emphasize, background checks are conducted on all PSB employees, and had been conducted on Mr. Morales on a number of occasions, and all of his, his background checks were current at the time of his arrest, even though he was no longer an employee. We have identified students, all students, we believe, who have, who may have had contact with Mr. Morales while he was employed as a paraprofessional at Pearson Devotion. And we have individually contacted each of the families of those students. In addition, we prepared a script that we used for those contacts, and shared that script with the directors of the two extended days. And I asked them to contact the families of any student who was in their extended day program during the time of his employee, employment directly, not by email, but by telephone. And, and I believe they are still in process of making those contacts. And we can, as I said, we continue to be in contact, in particular with the Police Department, about any assistance that we might provide to them. That's my report. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. Questions by anyone? I wanted to make just a brief comment. Just looking at the ELL program and the trends in, in the foreign languages, I noticed that in 2004, we had zero students speaking Arabic, and now we have 31. And I hope what that means is that Brookline is viewed as a friendly place for those people. And I think it does, and I'm proud of that.
Can I, you know, it's not in the press release, but let me say one other item about the last piece. So one, one thing that, that I want to say to, to reassure anyone, I have no idea, we did follow the court proceedings yesterday, and I have no idea whether Mr. Morales has or will make bail. But, but people should be reassured that on the day of his arrest, we issued a no trespass order for all of our schools, and had it delivered to Mr. Morales on that day. So Mr. Morales has a no trespass order and is not permitted on the grounds of any Brookline school. Thanks.
So it's time for a discussion regarding Strategic Plan 2.0, our progress to date and possible future steps. And Dr. Fisher-Mueller is here to kick us off, or out, as the case may be.
I think she's going to kick us out.
I don't either. I thought it was a remote possibility.
Yes, I think so. We'll have to wash that.
Dr. Fisher-Mueller, if I understand it correctly, you're really looking to make this somewhat of a participative event. Is that correct, regarding the reading of something? It's like a classroom.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll offer more details at that time. So thank you for this opportunity to share with you an update on where we stand with the development of Strategic Plan 2.0. And I want to welcome Ms. Ditko to join me in this presentation and participate in this update. So tonight, what I would like to do is to say a word about the purpose of a strategic plan in Brookline, a word about Strategic Plan 1.0, and then a review of our process to date, then share with you the draft, vision, mission, core values, and goals. Brief comment on what is left for us to do, and then open it up for discussion. So I'm very happy to say that in the public schools of Brookline, a strategic plan matters. Folks often refer to the idea of a large binder being on a shelf collecting dust, and that most certainly is not the case in Brookline. Our strategic plan defines teaching and learning. Our defeat, excuse me, our strategic plan is used as a guide. And quick examples of that, when you review the documents describing our programs, for example, Social Immoral Learning and Bullying Prevention Program, you will see reference to the vision and to the mission, the same you heard recently with the technology plan. Also then, with the override study committee, the superintendent used the core values to describe decisions that we make about our programs. For example, and I understand that this is illegible, I'm showing it just as the visual here, but under the core value of high achievement for all, class size parameters, early education programs, decisions about programs like that are made based on our core values. Excellence in Teaching, for example, decisions about professional learning, decisions about our mentoring programs, decisions about strategies to attract and retain the finest educators. Again, those fall under our core values, and our strategic plan in Brookline serves as a guide for these such decisions. Strategic Plan 1.0 provided us with a vision, mission, core values, goals, and measurable targets, as well as a list of strategies, as ideas or actions to in fact accomplish those goals. And the strengths of Strategic Plan 1.0 were around the language of the vision and mission, which I just described to you, used often, and used as a guide. And then the core values, the four core values were reaffirmed, and there was a fifth core value added, educational equity. And I will speak to that in later detail. In terms of the goals, we outlined four strategic goals, and then we described measurable targets that fell within each of those goals. And that was new here in Brookline. And under each of those goals, there was statements of strategies. And it was really around the strategies that identify the area in need of greatest development for Strategic Plan 2.0. And more of that to come. Again, with Strategic Plan 2.0, we are working with a committee. This committee is broader than the committee of the last version. It includes teachers, principals, the headmaster, other administrators, including central office, as well as Mr. Chang and Ms. Ditko as the co-chair, as representatives from the school committee. We have parent representation and broader community representation, as well as a Brookline Again, this, knowing it's illegible, I share it as just a visual to outline to you. Each one of these are dates for meetings. And what we've done here is just group the meetings. So right here, you see, this is Strategic Plan Committee. We've met 10 times with the Strategic Plan Committee. Each one of those meetings is posted as an open meeting. The, we've had four parent meetings, three of those focus groups, and actually, a parent leader group is coming next month. And then, I believe it's six times, we have presented to you in some fashion and sought your input as the school committee. And then all of the remaining dates here represent meetings with internal educators and existing groups, whether it be senior staff, or the leadership team, high school coordinators, academic standards committee, and Teaching and Learning Council, which is a group of teachers. So again, I share this visual as a representation of the number of folks who are involved in the creation of this work and the broad involvement. So Strategic Plan 2.0. In Strategic Plan 1.0, the vision was titled a 10-year vision, and in fact, that has held true. Meaning, when we presented the vision and mission, there was a strong belief that these were worthy of, you know, staying as they were, well-written, and have served their purpose. So the vision and mission that you will read in just a minute are exactly the same as they were in the earlier vision. The core values, each one of the five core values were reaffirmed, and the changes in there, it's really about updating some of the language and attending to some shifts in the last five years. But conceptually, each and every one of our five core values stands strong. And then we have the four goals, that again, I will, you'll read in just a minute. And this right here then completes what I'm sharing with you tonight, vision, mission, core values, and goals. And what falls under the goals and the work that remains will be a statement of the results that we believe we will see when these goals are met, and the metrics, the measurements that will represent those results. Then the priority statements are similar in style, if you will, to strategies, meaning, what are the actions that we believe we need to take in order to reach those goals? Then, under each of those priority statements, we will be developing SMART goals. And those SMART goals, by definition, will include measurable targets. So, the vision. Dr. Lupini, if you would start us off with a reading of our 10-year vision.
What?
Interpretive dance?
It's interpretive dance. I'm happy to, Dr. Fisher-Mueller. Thank you. Brookline provides an extraordinary education for every child. Each child's unique path to achievement is supported in academically exciting and programmatically rich environments. A dynamic, diverse community of teaching professionals works collaboratively, innovating and inspiring each other and their students. Staff gets to know students intellectually, developmentally, and culturally. Students are encouraged to question and challenge ideas and participate as active citizens. Schools use a variety of assessments to get the fullest picture of student learning and growth over time. These data are shared regularly with the community, and they form the basis of how we understand and improve student, teacher, and administrator performance. Parents are partners with the schools in supporting their children's education, and schools communicate effectively so that parents are confident of the response to their child's circumstances and needs. The community, well-informed and involved in their schools, supports these efforts that continue a tradition of challenging ourselves to do better, efforts that ensure the enduring value of a Brookline education.
And Ms. Ditko, would you mind reading the mission?
Sure. "Our mission is to ensure that every student develops the skills and knowledge to pursue a productive and fulfilling life, to participate thoughtfully in a democracy, and succeed in a diverse and evolving global society."
Again, those are exactly as written in the first version. And so now, if we could begin with the core values that have been edited some. And Ms. Kershaw, if you would read the first core value.
Why on this night? No. High achievement for all. We realize the power of holding high expectations for all students, and we inspire students to develop a lifelong passion for learning. To accomplish this, we place great importance on rigor, ensuring that curriculum, instruction, and assessment help students develop the capacity to synthesize information, acquire knowledge, and apply their understanding to solve complex problems. We prioritize the ability to solve real-world and ever-changing problems, so students see the relevance of their studies. We seek to challenge all students and support them to reach their full potential. We help students become invested in their learning and develop the confidence and persistence to grow as learners, and meet their goals to succeed in and beyond school."
Very nice. And excellence in teaching, Ms. Stone.
Excellence in teaching. Passionate, knowledgeable, and skillful teachers are the core strength of our school system. Understanding that excellent teaching begins with strong relationships with students, Brookline educators actively create an environment in which students feel safe to take risks, are respected for their identity, and are motivated to challenge themselves. Excellent teachers set high expectations for all students and believe that intelligence grows with effective effort. Our teachers provide coherent and engaging instruction and assessment that accommodates differences in learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. Brookline educators value shared responsibility for all students. We create and sustain a collaborative environment for differences in learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. Brookline educators value shared responsibility for all students. We create and sustain a collaborative environment for faculty and staff that promotes an atmosphere of intellectual excitement, innovative instruction, and personal growth."
Thank you.
Collaboration fosters interaction among diverse viewpoints and broadens learning for our students, staff, and community. Brookline educators teach students to learn and problem-solve collectively. We support professionals working with each other across schools, disciplines, grades, and roles. We seek our partnership with the organization that mirrors the value of our school system, and we actively promote partnership with parents and the entire Brookline community who share the responsibility for educating our students.
Ms. Scott.
Respect for human differences. We honor the diversity within our community and affirm the importance of our common humanity. We provide a safe environment for learning about human differences. We value varying perspectives and experiences. We create an inclusive atmosphere in which caring and deepening understanding promote an authentic sense of belonging and respect for all.
Educational equity. Educators provide all students with the individual support they need to reach and exceed our rigorous Brookline standards. We identify and eliminate barriers to educational achievement in our schools. To this end, we create policies and practices that are fair and just, and provide educational opportunities to ensure that every student meets our standards for achievement, participation, and growth regardless of race, color, religion, gender and gender identity, sexual orientation, age, language, national origin, disability/ability, socioeconomic, and other status.
Thank you. So briefly, what is different across these core values? The high achievement for all, you will notice words like inspire and passion, the word rigor and relevance, persistence and confidence. Each of those words actually represent the learning that we have been doing that, you know, over the past five years, in terms of the literature and the contemporary research. For excellence in teaching, we found that the new educator evaluation system and the standards with rubrics actually provided some language that we agreed with, and we used some of that language, and if you will, Brookline-ized it, to create this description. So you see here again, the statement around strong relationships with students, but also this idea of students needing to feel safe to take risks, respect for their identity. Intelligence grows with effective effort, and that is about growth mindset as defined by Carol Dweck. You see there comments at the end here around faculty and staff and personal growth, which is how we frame the new educator evaluation system, that it is about, it is about professional, personal growth. And collaboration. This one is quite similar to the earlier one, a little bit more around what is the outcome of collaboration, meaning that among, with collaboration and gaining these different viewpoints and broadening our learning through collaboration, broadening student learning, excuse me. But it continues to support the idea of collaboration both within schools and outside of the school system, and collaboration with organizations. And respect for human differences. This one, this one was very interesting in its development, and actually where it is right now is not far from what it was in the first version, but still in that similarity is gaining a lot of support, continues to have a lot of support. I think the major difference here is that sense of an authentic sense of belonging. That was, oh, excuse me for not putting that other one up. That was a part of the conversation. But what continued is this idea of creating an inclusive atmosphere that is about respect and care. And then educational equity. The difference in 2.0 is the very first sentence. If you go to the second sentence, the second sentence mirrors 1.0, but what that says is that's about policies and practices. And what we found is that that language, and this is, you know, a few years back now, that language wasn't resonating with educators, and we didn't feel we had a working definition of educational equity. And so we did some work in identifying what is that definition that would resonate with educators. And that is also work that came through coordinators, building principals, Teaching and Learning Council. And so this very first statement has been our working definition of educational equity, that educators provide all students with the individual support they need to reach and exceed our rigorous Brookline standards. So what we have in this core value, again, is the same statement as before, but also then a message that speaks to all of the educators. So those are the five core values, and now Mr. Morris, if you would, goal one.
Every student invested in learning is the name of the goal, and then increase the achievement of every student by emphasizing rigor, relevance, relationships, a spirit of inquiry, and the joy of learning.
Tell me I was doing two. Every student achieving, goal number two. Ensure every student meets or exceeds Brookline's high standards by ensuring equity and eliminating persistent achievement gaps.
Ditko. You know, we're not supposed to have favorites, but I like this one. Okay.
Hey.
They're all. Oh, Helen.
Oh.
All right, Helen, you, Helen, you can do number three.
Are you sure?
It's, I really like it.
Okay.
No, 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 you should do it.
Even though it's her favorite, Helen, you go ahead and do it.
I'm not allowed to have favorites.
She's tearing up, Helen.
Well, okay, what do you want? I'm not clear.
Go ahead. Rego three, please.
You can't pick among your children. Rego three.
Every student prepared for change and challenge. Instill students the habits of mind, academic practice, social awareness, and life strategies critical for educational ownership and engagement, and for lifelong success in meeting the intellectual, civic, and social demands of diverse environments and ever-changing world.
Thank you, Ms. Trelowski, and I apologize for skipping you earlier.
That's okay. I was wondering if you were going to get to me. I know how to speak up.
Okay, this one's my favorite, too.
I can vouch for that.
Hey, wait, I can't hear the jokes.
I said this one's my favorite, too. So goal four. Every educator growing professionally. Foster dynamic professional learning communities that encourage inquiry, reflection, collaboration, innovation, and the use of data to improve teaching, advance student learning, and refine programs and practices of the public schools of Brookline.
So to highlight some of the changes. In just the title of goal one, from academic excellence to every student invested in their learning, that word invested is chosen very carefully. We often talk about engagement, but there is in fact a difference between a student being engaged and a student being invested. And you'll also notice the difference between the earlier version and 2.0. Earlier, we spoke of content, pedagogy, and student-teacher relationships, and that was the strong research at the time. And it's not that that has necessarily gone away, but there is a greater focus and more specificity in the language of rigor, relevance, and relationships. So again, you'll see within rigor and relevance, that is about content, and it also is about pedagogy, and relationships then continues. So it's, I don't want you to think that content and pedagogy are now gone, okay, but rigor and relevance again is more specific. A spirit of inquiry and the joy of learning. Both of those very much come from Brookline. Well, certainly the spirit of inquiry, that's rampant in the literature, the idea of students actually posing questions in the art of questioning. But the idea of joy of learning, I must say, and Ms. Ditko, you may want to add to this, we worked hard to find the right place for the word joy, because we felt very strongly that this idea of investment, this idea of lifelong learning, being inquisitive and a creative thinker, yes for all of that, and for students to actually experience that emotion of the joy of learning is something that we really want to, we want to perpetuate.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to that is that Dr. Wendy Schubow, who was on our committee also, I remember, made a very strong statement about this at one of our early meetings, as did Melissa London, who was one of our teachers, as did Ms. Scotto, who reviewed it as the chair of the curriculum committee. And so it meant a lot to me that a lot of the educators in the room who deal with, so what does it take, what's the difference between getting kids to achieve and being, a child being invested in their learning, a lot of that is around a spirit of inquiry and joy. And so to my mind, it should be in the same place as rigor is, because those, it needs to temper rigor, and joy needs to temper rigor, and rigor needs to temper joy. And that's sort of how you get kids invested with real challenges and real problems and doing it with that, with that spirit. So it was important to us, it was important to educators, and I'm delighted it got in in the right place.
For goal two, absolutely, the concept of educational equity and achievement gaps resonated, and there was never any thought about moving away from that, those concepts. The language was difficult, but I think we were able to land in a good place, at least right now in this draft, that what we're talking about is ensuring equity and educational equity as the process of learning. When equity is present, achievement gaps are not. When there are inequities, then you have achievement gaps. So what we're doing in the language of this goal is we are, we are matching those, ensuring equity and therefore eliminating persistent achievement gaps. And one of the things that we've struggled with over the past five years with version one was the naming of only three gaps, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, whereas the special education reference here didn't necessarily speak to a gap. And also then, we didn't look at, at least in terms of what we reported on in our annual report card, we didn't look at gaps with English language learners or gender gaps. Again, that's about the public report, it's not that we internally didn't look at that. But to say that in a different way, for all of our goals, we report publicly, all right? That's the idea of that level of accountability. And so what we're asking you is actually to hold us accountable to all of the gaps, all of the persistent gaps that we see. And what we know is that our very most persistent gap is around race, African-American, black, and Hispanic-Latino, and then socioeconomic status. So the word persistent is very important and very strong there. And goal three. Again, the same idea, the same idea of a complex global society. A little bit of a change in language, the habits of mind and academic practice, the idea of social awareness and life strategies, that actually speaks to our learning over the past few years on what's described in our profession as the non-cognitive elements of learning. And then also keeping strong the idea of civic and social demands and this concept of an ever-changing world. And finally, goal four.
And Ms. Stone will be delighted to know that we managed to avoid the used 21st century skills, being now 13 years into the 21st century.
Yes.
We thought we could finally, just so. We held out for all of your hot-button issues, lest you, lest you think we weren't playing bingo with the school committee feedback.
That's right. And one other quick plug around the name 21st century skills, in fact, it's not that they're about the 21st century, they, they're not new, okay? What they are is they are now high priority, all right? They're high priority skills. So, goal four. This is about educators growing, where previously we spoke to using data very specifically. So the idea of using data is still embedded in goal four, but what we are stating here is that, that as educators, we know that we need to work within a dynamic professional learning community, we need to work collaboratively, to be inquisitive, to be reflective, to engage in innovation, and then to use data to improve teaching and advance student learning. So again, similar concepts, but some shifts in language actually make a difference. As I said in an earlier slide, while I'm showing you vision, mission, core values, and goals, there's an awful lot still to come, all right? What will follow goals are results. And with these statements of results, we'll be asking questions like, what does this look like when the goal is met? How will the results be measured? And so whatever we're saying that we will be seeing, we want to be sure to attach a metric to it. And so this is just, that first one up above is just an example. And then under these statements of results and accompanying the metrics, then we need to name, what are the priority actions that are necessary for us to achieve those results? And then this is just one example. We have a category called educator learning and growth, and then underneath those priority actions of educator learning and growth, we will be creating SMART goals. And again, the point here is what has been missing in our past strategic plan are these clear action plans with benchmarks about how we'll be achieving these goals. And that's a draft of the metrics, but we're okay, we don't need to go through that. And another example. So collectively, when we are finished, we will have for you vision, mission, core values, and goals with results with metrics, priorities, and SMART goals. So again, for right now, tonight was about updating you on these first four elements. And I, oops.
Can you read that one for us?
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I just say one word to that? So we, we've had a lot of discussion about this and timing, and I just want to emphasize that this work beyond goals, it obviously cannot occur now, in the midst of everything else that we're being asked to, to engage in, particularly around the override study, but, but also around budget, et cetera. So our plan from the beginning has been to pull this out after May, right? So whether that's May 1st, whether that's June 1st, sometime in that timeframe, and re-initiate the remainder of this process. So, so that's where we are. So it's, you know, we're, this was the goal, to get to this point by now, thank you for doing that, and to all the people who participated, as I know you took this back through those groups this fall, to get, to get to this point. And, and this, this is a great deal of work, what comes from this point on out, and it's important work, and it deserves our full attention, and we can't give it that full attention right now.
Can I just add to that for a second? The only thing I wanted to add to that was that going into the Strategic Plan Committee, even in our first meeting or two, the general feeling was that the strategic plan is in very good shape, as it is. The old version, it's better now, but even the old version was in very good shape. It was being used, it was, there were a lot of things that we've improved on, but it was not nonexistent, it was not not being used, it was not in crisis, it was in good shape. So I think the, the reason why what the superintendent said makes sense, at least as we've talked about it, is that it is, the, the point was to say, are there any big changes that we think we would need to see in the future direction of the district as we do things like prioritize in budgets or do anything like that? And the answer was that there were no dramatic changes in direction. There were important shifts and important advances, but nothing that was a dramatic change in direction. The school system here is excellent, children are getting an excellent education, teachers are doing a terrific job, and this is an improvement, but not a dramatic shift. So at least as I reflect on this, we're not losing time by, by doing that, we are continue, as we think about continuous improvement, it just makes a lot of sense. So that's, I don't know, Jennifer, if you have So that's, I don't know if Jennifer, if you have a different sense, but that's my sense of where we are.
I don't have a difference at all, I would just add that also, we will be welcoming a director of research and evaluation, and I appreciate that expertise when we start talking about metrics and SMART goals.
Other comments? Well, thank you, Ms. Dickoff.
The only last thing I will say is, I'm not sure how much people understand how much Jennifer did here.
Right.
I think you can all guess, but sometimes there are more and less direct ways up a mountain, and I'm not sure that strategic plan committees ever take the most direct way up a mountain, and they didn't in this case either. And the fact that the strategic plan committees stayed friends with each other, it was all of good cheer and productive conversations, and the fact that there was a forward motion, even while there were so many other priorities going on, is a real testament to her passion in driving this forward and landing the plane, as it were. And so, just a gigantic thank you to Jennifer, who at times circled back and, on our journey up the mountain, picked up people, put them in her backpack, and kept going so that we could actually get here. So, thank you, it was a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
Bravo.
As well, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And, this is an update on vision, mission, core values and goals, all right? We're going back to the strategic plan committee to say, so this is what we took from when we last met, and now here's where we are. And while we feel very, very good about it, we're excited to go back to the committee. And if there are any changes, I can't imagine there will be changes of great significance, but if there are, we will certainly be coming back to the curriculum subcommittee and then back to you again. But I want to thank that committee for their patience and understanding of all that's been going on and how this process has played out.
A really impressive job, really. As I read it over again or listen to my colleagues, it really reads very well and very relevant.
A lot of people have had their hands on it.
Thank you so much.
And I think that this is a new strategy for any of my presentations, I'll just have you read, right? I'll just call your name.
It's good teaching technique, right? Ms. Kershaw? How about that? Marvelous.
Maybe it'll make me go faster. I'm standing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to present to you the final budget guidelines. And following the presentation of the content, we are going to ask the committee to take two actions. One is to pass these, but before that, we are actually one meeting behind in our schedule on presenting these to you. We should have presented them to you at our last school committee meeting, and so tonight would have been our second reading, when we would have asked you for a vote. And I'm going to ask the committee to consider amending the budget development calendar so that we can vote on these this evening. We felt that that was an important piece of communication, both for the superintendent...
No?
You may need those.
Oh, thank you. And also, as we go through our budget development process in parallel with the override study committee, that this would be a good document to share there.
Absolutely.
So, most of you participated in the development of the budget guidelines, so I don't think I have to go into them in great detail. We had them posted and available for you in their current format. The budget development guidelines are organized this year into an overview section, which kind of lays the context for this year's development. It starts with sort of our responsibilities, and talks a little bit about the override study committee. We then go into process and principles in this year's budget guidelines. We decided that we would have a section about the process for the development and what our expectations are in terms of best practices in budgeting. And then we have a section on sort of current conditions and mandates, and then we have a section on budgeting for educational excellence, or perhaps we should be changing that to budgeting for all students invested in learning. Seems like that would be more consistent with the strategic plan. And then we have a section of gratitudes at the end. So that's how it's generally organized, as you know. So I'm going to highlight for you, in the context of budget, the content here. So again, the background and overview focuses on that this is one of our primary responsibilities as a body, is to oversee and approve the budget and to provide guidance to the superintendent in his budget development. Since 2009, we've been fortunate to be informed in our budget discussions by the strategic plan, which as we hear is being updated and will continue to be a driving force in our budget discussions and budget priorities. Necessarily, every year, the annual budget responds to dynamic situations at the federal, state, and local level, and this year is no exception. We keep thinking that each year is at the top of our uncertainty, and it keeps getting more and more uncertain and mercurial, I think is the word we used. And so the budget guidelines provide an opportunity for us to think through together what choices and priorities we need to make, given the environment. In FY15, we want to talk a little bit about the context here. So we are facing really pretty considerable uncertainties, primarily driven by the unprecedented enrollment growth, which I don't need to go into here, because we've done that in many places, but it obviously creates an enormous pressure on our budget. And because of that, we're requesting this year that the superintendent and his staff consider really developing two budget scenarios, or a set of scenarios that encompass really two concepts. The first is sort of an educational excellence, we've been calling this a catch-up budget, investing in, having students invested in learning budget, one that really reflects the kind of excellence in programming that we've come to expect in Brookline, that reflects the values and the mission and the vision that we are embracing through our strategic plan, and really reflects sort of catching up from providing the full set of services and supports associated with enrollment growth. I think in a lot of our discussions, we really focused on the fact that we have prioritized teachers and small class sizes over the years, as we, as our enrollment growth has continued to outpace our available revenue. And because of that, there are parts of the system, both at the administrative level and at the teaching and learning support level, that haven't kept pace. And so we've asked the superintendent and his staff to really think carefully about what a budget that would provide that level of support would look like. And obviously, we also have a responsibility to make sure that if there are not additional revenues, because we believe an educational excellence budget would necessarily require additional revenues, that we also have at least one other scenario that reflects what the compromises would be, were we not to have additional revenue. Obviously, the other FY15 context is around the override study committee that's being charged with determining whether additional revenue capacity is needed across the town. And obviously, the timing of that decision and discussion matters as much as the content of it at this point in the budget development process. As Ms. Dickoff said, the recommendations are expected on March 1st, which is following the first budget presentation by the superintendent to the school committee. So we have outlined a set of principles that we hope the superintendent and the administration will follow in the development of the budget process, both internally and externally with our stakeholders and partners on the town side. We really want to emphasize transparency and accountability, making sure that we're being as clear as possible. As all of you know, because of the way the budget development timeline process works, the superintendent has to present his budget before the state budget is finalized. Often, that is a changing landscape, in addition to the override study committee now adding additional element of change. So we hope that at every step along the process, we'll make the best possible decisions in as transparent a way as we can, given the information we have at the time. The second principle we're hoping to follow is minimizing reliance on one-time funds. Seems that we may be tested again on this one, but it is a principle that we need to be paying very careful and close attention to. We've been fortunate, in the current fiscal year, that we've been carrying a small surplus, which has allowed us to relieve some of the pressure on those one-time funds we've been carrying. But if we are extending the bridge to the future, I fear this will be one of the strategies that we'll have to rely on, so we'll have to watch that carefully. Similarly, we want to plan judiciously for potential, we say unexpected circumstances, but the truth is, in most years, we have expected circumstances. So at this time last year, for example, we were looking at a deficit in our budget because of enrollment, growing at a higher pace than we had projected, and also some other expenses. So we often plan, and I think we want to continue to do that, to make sure that there's targeted reserves and contingencies for unexpected or expected circumstances. We want to maintain solvency, the administration's done a terrific job in our revolving funds of making sure that they are self-sustaining in a way that they weren't in the past, and that's a terrific trend we want to recognize and have continue. We also want to make sure that before we're seeking any new revenues from any sources, that we're also making sure that there's program efficiencies and savings within our existing programming. Finally, I think times of difficult budget can have us hunkering down, and this is not something we did last year, and I don't think it's something that we would encourage the administration to do either. We think there are, and they have given us good examples of times when we want to make targeted investments that actually yield greater savings. So rather than thinking about just hunkering down and protecting exactly what we have, we want to continue to encourage innovation that can realize budget efficiencies and also improve teaching and learning. Those are the principles. The current conditions, I don't need to go into very much detail on these, because they have been discussed at length in other places. They are creating upward pressure on our budget, and they include the enrollment growth. Special education, I'll just mention for a moment, because as our budget grows, our special education costs grow. But in this particular case, the administration, through a number of program reforms, has actually helped us manage to a more sustainable curve in our special education budget. Through a number of programmatic reforms, we've been able to see the number of overall population grow, but the percentage of special education children is actually decreasing, and that's amazing. And that is really due to new programs within the district where we'll be able to serve kids here in less restrictive settings. So it's good educationally, and it's also been a cost savings. Now, the budget still continues to grow, because there's aspects of cost, like transportation and the cost of out-of-district placements, that grow even as the percentage of our students receiving special education drops. We're in the third year of a collective bargaining contract, and the committee's view in presenting to the school committee is that we want to continue to rely on what the override study committee of 2008 suggested, which that as we enter in good faith bargaining, as we always will, that we make sure that whatever we agree to is sustainable in terms of revenues. And then state mandates, obviously, in the context of the budget, I don't need to go into the programmatic details of the number of mandates that we're facing around social, emotional learning, and bully prevention, educator evaluation, park, and retail. But the context here is that these continue to require a significant investment of both human and financial resources, and so we need to recognize them in the context of the Finally, there are 10 areas that we have put forward as really being components of a budget that reflects educational excellence. And we are not so naive to think that each one of these can be fully funded in the current year, but we encourage the administration to consider in the development of its budget these aspects that we feel need to be included in a budget that reflects the kind of educational excellence that the town and school communities have come to expect. We also encourage the administration to think about the phasing and the timeline, and which things are fundamental this year, given available revenues, and which things can be implemented in out-years. But we do hope that in some way or form, the budget includes investments in innovation and rigor, and in particular, those innovations or educational strategies that address both our persistent achievement gap and also support challenge for students at all levels. We think there are educational things like differentiation and other strategies that we think can address both of those needs within our classrooms and buildings. We want to make sure that we're still recruiting and maintaining a diverse faculty of the highest quality by supporting both professional development and our materials fee program, mentoring lower-class sizes. We are committed to making sure that we are looking at what we are doing and continuing improvements, and whether that's through program review or looking at various assessments or standardized tests, we want to make sure that we have a robust infrastructure for reviewing, understanding where we are, and then incorporating recommendations. We want to also assess, oh, this goes back to one of the other principles that we have, which is really making sure that as we're presenting this budget, we're not just looking at the classroom level, but we're looking at the whole district and the supports that are needed to support the size district that we have become. So we want to continue to focus on teacher, low student-teacher ratios and small class sizes, but we have to focus on the administrative and educational supports and infrastructure that are needed to really make sure that that teaching and learning in a classroom is supported. We also want to make sure that several of the successful programs, especially those that are focused around student achievement or closing the achievement gap, are continued and supported, such as steps to success, literacy initiative, benchmark assessment. So we don't want to lose the focus on making sure that the programs that have already demonstrated success in closing the achievement gap, that we don't lose progress that we've made in those areas. Another important educational benefit to our district is maintaining racially and culturally diverse classrooms, and in particular, by continuing a commitment to the MEKO program, which we believe accrues significant educational benefits to our students throughout our schools. Again, maintaining low student-teacher ratios, and we think especially in the younger grades, because this is the key to making sure that students are getting the kind of learning within the classroom, that individual attention and also differentiation, that can help both our typically-developing students, as well as our struggling and our students who need additional challenge. We also like to see a continued commitment to the high-quality early childhood experiences, at least at the current enrollment levels that we have, and full-day kindergarten, which is a key investment for later success. And we believe strongly that this is a public school responsibility, and that we'd like to see it continue funded from the public schools of Brookline rather than through fees. And then there's a whole number of other parts of our educational curriculum that we want to make sure are sustained, that go into the high-quality, excellent education we have, and those include art and music, foreign language, recess, physical education, and that those should be incorporated and maintained as critical pieces of the regular school day. Finally, I think everyone on the school committee was very excited to see the administration's envisioning of a technology, a robust and flexible technology infrastructure for the long run. And we would really welcome the administration's view of what in FY15 investments we think we can make in order to realize that vision in the long run, in order to catch up educationally and also excel through the application of technology across the system. Okay, so let me just review quickly what the timeline is, even though it's not totally logical. I didn't make it up.
Totally?
It's not at all logical, it's not logical in the least. Tonight, with the school committee's indulgence, we will hopefully take some action relative to the budget guidelines. In January, on the third Wednesday generally, the governor's House One, or it was House Two this year? House One this year? That's the first year of the legislative session. The governor's budget will be released, followed shortly thereafter by the superintendent's budget message and our detailed budget to the school committee, so we'll be looking at that carefully in February. Is it the 27th? Sorry. Generally, the timeline is governor's budget January, superintendent's budget February, override study committee recommendations March, our public hearing at the end of March. We are expected to take a vote on our budget on April 10th, which is significant in this timeline, which is followed by the House budget, which is released in April, the Senate budget, which released in May, and then during June, there's generally a conference committee at the state level. And obviously, state revenues relative to circuit breaker, Chapter 70, and any number of our grant programs have a heavy, heavy influence on the revenues that we have available. So I put this up here in the vein of making sure that we are all realizing that we will be in a position to continue to make the best possible decision we can with the information we have, which will change throughout this process. And I know that the administration will keep us up to date.
Ms. Kershaw? I do think it's important to note that May is also a town meeting, which has to approve the overall budget for the schools, not line items, but the overall budget.
That's really important, so we should probably add that to the timeline here. I'm sure there's a number of other steps that are not included as well, but I thought it was important for us to just... it was important for us to just put it in context. Finally, I just want to add the last gratitudes that we do make in the budget guidelines that I didn't put on the slides, which is just to say that we benefit from an enormous amount of partnership, first and foremost, with the town and their generosity and support and leadership to support the schools. Also, a number of organizations and community organizations, including our PTOs and local foundations. So the budget as a whole and the excellence of the schools is dependent on the goodwill of all of those partners, and so we are grateful to them as we step into this budget development process. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kershaw. Can I presume that you have made a motion to approve these budget guidelines? Okay.
I would first like to make a motion to amend the budget development calendar, which was voted on, to consolidate the first and second reading on the budget guidelines to this December 19 School Committee, so that we may take a vote this evening with our first and second reading. So that is, I would like to move that we amend the budget development calendar, so that a first and second reading and a vote on the budget guidelines can happen here.
And I have a second from Mr. Pollak. Thank you very much. Mr. Pollak, is there discussion? Seeing none. We need a roll-call vote, yes. I'm getting closer to that, but thank you, Ms. Stone.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Otto? Mr. Tany?
Yes.
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 Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, with the chairman's indulgence, I would like to move approval of the FY 2015 budget guidelines and priorities, as previously presented.
I certainly will indulge you. And Ms. Stone has seconded, and once again, I'll ask, are there any, is there any discussion or comment? Seeing none, once again, can we have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tany?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dickoff?
Yes.
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 Very good. Nicely done, Ms. Kershaw. Thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you.
Clear? That having been accomplished, is there any new business that anyone would like to bring before us? Seeing no hands, I declare this committee meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Happy New Year.